The ZBA appeals on for September 13, 2008. Roll call.
Knight. Allen.
Yeah.
Gensick.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Bontrager.
Here.
Pavilio.
Here.
Walkley.
Here.
Alt.
Here.
Okay, approval agenda. Motion in a second, or what?
I motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. Mike. Okay. Alt.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Gensick.
Yes.
Pavilio.
Yes.
Knight. Walkley.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Okay, next is approval meetings minutes for the log sixteenth minute. Any comments, corrections, or not motion?
We approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
For a second. Okay. Allen.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Gensick.
Yes.
Pavilio.
Yes.
Walkley.
Yes.
Okay, your turn.
My turn?
Your turn.
Your turn. We're, I'm gonna start it quickly by explaining a gaffe that we here staff at City Hall did. We discovered after four o'clock yesterday afternoon that the appropriate public notice to property owners and residents within 300 feet of the site were not properly notified. So, we just, it got screwed up, it got screwed up. But, with the time-sensitive nature of an application that the developer, Phil, is it Seibert, Phil pronounced?
Seibert.
Seibert? With the time sensitivity with an application, he's filing, I believe it's with the state of Michigan, and he will explain it, he's here. We are rescheduling a special meeting of the ZBA. It's gotta be 15 days from now, so it'll be literally Friday, September 28th. We're hoping we can get enough of you to make it to have a quorum. And we put a public notice in the paper. John and I, in fact, took the public notice and we hand-delivered it to every business and residence and any of the, we hand-delivered it, but we also, for example, we mail it to like the corporate office of, you know, Rite Aid and, you know, those types of businesses. What we would like to do, because we know you're gonna have questions, and Mr. Seibert's here to answer your questions, is I would still like to go through the PowerPoint, the staff report, let him speak to you, let any of the public that's here speak, and he can hopefully, you know, he knows the project, he can answer, he can answer questions. But I would like to proceed in that fashion, if you folks, if that's all right with you. Nick?
Yeah.
Okay.
When's the next meeting gonna be?
September 28th, and I will give you a copy. We'll get you a copy of it here. I think it's right here. There. Thank you. To start off, this is a picture of the applicant's senior housing development in Clare, Michigan. He'll explain how old it is, when they built it, so forth, but these are independent living, these are not assisted living. They are independent living, so, and the one he's proposing for here is for seniors over the age of 55. His name is Philip Seibert, Seibert. He is the president of PS Equities, they're based in Mount Pleasant. There's actually a three-part variance request. The first is to allow for variance of up to 15 feet in height for the proposed building. The site is in a B3 zone district, general business district. The current zoning allows for structures up to 40 feet. And pretty much every zoning district within the city, with the exception of the core downtown B2 district, they all have that 40-foot maximum. The second part of the variance is to allow for setback, and I did not include all the details in the staff report, I left out, I didn't read it right, but allow for possible setback variance of up to five feet inside the allowed amount on the west side, which is Aspen Street, north and south. This is, he can explain that, he can explain the purpose of that. The west property line, though, which is Aspen Street, it's, it's, in a B3 district, your rear lot line, you can literally build up to the lot line, but because you've got a through street, you've got Aspen and Mitchell Street, we don't treat it that way, we don't allow someone to build literally on the property line. So, we treat the, we basically treat both sides like a front yard from the standpoint of your setback from the property line. So, we interpret it as they would need to be 20 feet from the Mitchell Street property line and 20 feet from the Aspen Street property line, which is actually set off quite a bit from the curb. And he'll get into it some more, 'cause there's discussion about sidewalks, so the setback would basically be from the side, from the sidewalk. And he's, to my knowledge, he's not asking for setback variance at all on the Mitchell Street side, just five feet on the Aspen Street side. The third part of the variance request is to allow for additional covered structures. The B3 district allows for 25% of the site to be covered with structures. He's asking for an additional 12 and a, up to an additional 12 and a half percent, which would be 37 and a half, and I think he calculated it was actually 37.4, and that is to have carports. The, the actual apartment building, as we know, has a footprint, a proposed footprint of 12,847 square feet, which is 21.6% of the site's square footage. So, the additional, the additional 12.5% is specifically so that he can have some covered parking for the, for the tenants. Some neighboring property information, the neighboring properties to the south, which is like where the Willow is at, east across Mitchell Street, directly across the street's Dairy Queen, and to the north is the Dollar General Store. All three properties to the north, south, and east are also zoned B3. The properties on the west side across Aspen Street, those are zoned RM2, which is a multifamily zoning. For example, two of the rental homes, a lot of those are rental homes across from Aspen, they were built many, many years ago, and there's a couple of them that actually appear that they were setback 10 feet maybe from the sidewalk, the property line, so they're hugging the property line pretty good, some of those homes, and most of them are rentals. Also, in an RM2 zone district, property owners can cover up to 35% of the site, the square footage of the site, with covered structures and not need a variance. What I've done, I've added this, and you have this in your packet, but I added, I expanded it slightly to kinda show the properties across Aspen Street there that are zoned in an RM2 district. Here are some other apartment complexes in town. Harborview, you're looking at a six-story complex, you know, clearly that one's over 40 feet, and that isn't a zone district that's 40 feet. Kirkland Terrace, you got seven stories plus the structure on the top, so you're looking at some tall structures in town that are actually in residential areas. Kirkland Terrace, for example, this is where their carports, their carport, I think their carports, not garages, and they're setback, John and I actually measured from the brick wall, and it did appear that they're almost exactly 15-foot, the wall of the carport is setback from the, from the sidewalk. These are the garages at Marina Shores condominiums, and you can see just how close these are constructed to the sidewalk, which is roughly the property line, so they're hugging it pretty good, too. Marina Shores is a three-story structure. I honestly don't know exactly what the height is, obviously, I'm not, I don't like ladders, so, wouldn't know. And the same with the apartments condominiums that are kitty-corner from the Chamber of Commerce, that, you know, those are three stories, but they're up there pretty high, they're up there pretty high. And actually, the garages, you can kinda see them in the far-right corner, the garages, both on the north side and the west side towards the railroad tracks, they appear to be built almost right on the property line. Railroad right away and the property line with the building there. And this is the Sunset Shores condominiums, and just visually, they look higher with the pitch of the roof and everything than the, for example, the ones at Marina Shores. So, we have a number of apartment condominium complexes. Quickly, because we're gonna definitely discuss this again on the 28th, but from Section 4669B2, basically, our ordinance says that zoning board of appeals may authorize a variance from the strict application of the provisions of the ordinance whereby reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, or area of a specific piece of property at the time of enactment of the ordinance, or by reason of exceptional conditions of such property, the strict application of the regulations enacted would result in peculiar or exceptional practical difficulties to, or exceptional undue hardship upon the owner of such property. The other standards that we review, and again, we're gonna review these on the 28th, the first standard is that the requested, this is from the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, the requested variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent properties. Staff feels this variance is not gonna change the supply of light or air to the surrounding properties. The second standard is the requested variance will not unreasonably increase congestion in public streets. Granted, you're gonna have traffic inside the site where the apartments are at, if these are built, but Mitchell Street, in the most recent MDOT study, they counted 14,851 vehicles daily traveling on South Mitchell Street through there, so, you know, we feel that while it will have an impact on traffic, it's not, in the big scope, it's not a lot. One nice thing is the site being a through lot with access to Aspen Street, we feel that will certainly help if tenants wish to leave the complex and wanna travel north on Mitchell Street, because they'll be able to take Aspen Street, for example, to South Street by Rite Aid and Family Fair, and be able to get onto Mitchell at a light, if they wish, versus turning left out of the apartment complex. We have no idea what people will do, but that, for many people, is a safer option. The applicant, and when he talked with city council, they talked specifically about putting a sidewalk on the Aspen Street side of his property, so that, that he will get into, he'll get into that some more. You know, the logic is simply for persons that wish to walk to maybe Rite Aid or Family Fair, maybe even to the library or downtown for concerts and stuff, they will have a sidewalk, you know, at the west side of that property there. The next variance, the requested variance, will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety. We don't anticipate this, and included in your packet is a short letter that our fire marshal put together, and my understanding, these will be a sprinkler building, and of course, you know, with the occasional calls they make to Harborview, Kirkland Terrace, they're certainly are equipped to handle buildings of this height. The next variance, unreasonably diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area. We feel it's gonna improve surrounding property values. We've noticed that with kind of all of our, seems like all the new development in town, the surrounding properties, when they do sell, they're asking more money, they're asking more money. We've certainly seen it with a few downtown sales in the neighborhood. Lastly, the requested variance will not impair the public health, safety, comfort morals or welfare of the inhabitants of our city. We do not, staff feel this variance is gonna impair the public health, safety, comfort morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of our city. And again, we will discuss these more on the 28th. Getting to the end of it, Harborview Apartments and Kirkland Terrace Apartments, Marina Shores and the condominiums across the street, all of those are in districts that are zoned for 40-foot height restrictions. Kirkland Terrace and Marina Shores, they clearly have their carports and garages closer to the respective property lines than the setbacks allow. I don't know if they came before this group, Nick, and got variances, or if the planning commission did it as a part of a residential PUD, but there's no question, their carports and garages of those two and the condominiums across the street are located closer to the property lines. This was a tough calculation because of the shape of the lake and the shape of the Marina Shores condominium site, but from the measurements I could do with their garages, it appears that at least 33% of the site's square footage is covered with structures. They ultimately had to build a parking lot across the street, but when I did this calculation, I have kind of used the green space that goes around their little marina. I mean, that's technically on the site, but it's not a place they could've had parking, obviously. In the case of the condominiums across Lake Street here from us, with their garages and the condominium apartment building, it appears 43% of the site is covered with structures, so, it's not unheard of. One other thing, and I brought it here, and I can email it to anyone if they wish to read it, and I believe it's on page two or three, but in 2014, a housing study was completed. Networks Northwest is a, I think they're a government-sponsored agency, state of Michigan, they do a lot of planning studies and a lot of development studies for a 10-county area in northern Michigan, and they worked with the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and for Wexford County, when they completed it in November of 2014, they concluded that on an annual basis, there was going to be a need for 203 additional apartment, you know, apartment, apartments for people of all income and all social levels on an annual basis. And they calculated that over a five-year period, it would create a demand of literally 1,015 needed apartments in our county. And I'm sure they're taking into account some others that maybe are, you know, getting old and, you know, some of the old housing rental, but that particular housing study shows a large demand for apartments in our county. To my knowledge and Cadillac sense, this study was completed in 2014, I'm not aware of any apartment buildings that have been built, so, the need is there, and the senior population in our community is one of the faster-growing. Anywhere, I think that's kind of it. Notification of the public hearing, we did the newspaper thing right, we got it on our website, we posted it, but we did not do the proper mailing of this public hearing to the property owners in the neighborhood. And so, as a result of that, we are rescheduling another meeting on September 28th. We hope to have a quorum, and we, the timing of it is, we, it was our mistake, but the timing of it is important from the developer's standpoint, which he'll explain in this application. We are not asking for any board action today, not asking for any board action, and that's because of the issue with the public hearing. I'm available for questions, Mr. Seibert is, we have some people here today, and they're certainly welcome to speak, so, Nick, I'm gonna hand it back over to you, if that's all right.
Okay, I guess we start with the, state your name and address, please.
Certainly.
You already know it, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Phil Seibert. I reside at 680 Bluegrass Road in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. So, a little bit about me, I started in the development business in 1986, and started working with the state housing authority and developing affordable housing, so that's sort of the niche that I work in. I've developed 30-plus projects over that period of time across the state of Michigan. The one that's on the, on the screen there is the Clare Castle Building, that opened in July of 2010, I believe. That building is 24 units. We filled that building, it was actually pre-leased, within the first 30 days, it was fully occupied, up and running. We also, in that particular building, have a senior center with a full-service kitchen that the county of Clare leases from us, and they do their Meals on Wheels program out of there. There was a lot of good synergism with that, and we were really excited when we were able to put that whole deal together. Continues to be a very successful project. I've got senior properties in Spring Lake, Grand Rapids, just finished another castle, it's kind of, branding this kind of building, I guess, if you wanna call it that, we did one in downtown St. John's, which is a 30-unit that we just completed last fall, which is fully occupied and up and running, so, that's enough about me. I would add that I, my youngest son, Garrett, is working with me, he lives in Grand Rapids, I live in Mount Pleasant. We actually have three projects that we're focused on right now. And a little bit about the process that Mike was referring to and sort of the time constraints that I find myself under. These projects compete for an allocation of low-income housing tax credits, and the Michigan State Housing Development Authority is the allocating agency for the federal government, and the federal government gives so many of those credits on a per capita basis to each state, and then developers like me put together these elaborate applications, and believe me, by the time October 1 gets here, I'm gonna need two weeks in the woods somewhere, because you burn a lot of brain cells doing this stuff, but, they have two rounds a year, April 1 and October 1, and I came up here, I don't know, first part of June or something like that, and we sort of started down the road with this project, knowing full well our timeframe was a little bit constrained, so, that's the reason that, you know, we're talking about a September 28th, that's still, you know, subject to this board's approval, would provide me enough time to hand the application in on Monday, the 1st of October, so...
That's a little bit about the process. The site plan itself, again, we played with this site plan, we had two or three different variations. We tried to flip the building, I preferred to have it face Mitchell, we simply can't make it fit. The building is just a little bit too long, it's too crowded, and knowing the fire department, like, I know fire departments, after working in this business for 30 years, they wanna access around that building as best they can, and we simply couldn't provide a building running north and south with a drive on one side, it just wouldn't work, so, next thing we did was we flipped it, put the building to north, faced it south, the parking to the south. That had its own issues, and from my perspective as a developer, we've got somewhat of a lower area up in here, and I just felt it more prudent to move the building to the south side of the site. There's a lot of fill on that site from what we've been able to garner from the records, we built Mitchell Street, et cetera, et cetera. We've also got a little bit of an issue, there happens to be a storm line that runs right down through the middle of that lot. So, and we discovered that through our physical inspection of the site, there's not a reported easement on it, but we've, we think we have it all figured out. I did, John, did you get the utility, you did get the utility plan today?
Yes.
We've got a concept utility plan that's going to the planning commission on the 24th as well, but from the utilities perspective, we're bringing water and sewer off of Aspen, there's plenty of capacity, it's sufficient depth to service our project. The storm line, given that it's a public line, we're gonna reroute that storm line and bring it around the property edges, and then reconnect down here, so, that, that portion of the line would have to be vacated, and that needs to stay reconnected because of the storm drainage system that was constructed when the Dollar General was built as well. So, we've taken all that into consideration, we're looking at all those issues, we met with the city utility department as well as the city consulting engineer, so, sort of landed on this layout. I really like this layout the best, it does provide us the through path from Mitchell to Aspen, which the fire department likes. The one issue on one variance is, and we actually, this plan meets the setbacks, as it's, as it's shown. We're trying to build in a little latitude, 'cause we're not quite sure what's gonna happen up here with this lower area, we haven't been able to get the soil warnings completed at date, so, we're trying to leave a little latitude, and I'm, I'm gonna stand here before I tell you, if we can meet the setbacks, we're gonna meet the setbacks, and that's what this plan shows. I'm trying to prevent myself having to come back to this board if I need three or four feet to shift that building one way or another, and you can see the carports here, 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 here. Why do we do carports? Because seniors don't like to go out and brush a car off in the wintertime, none of us do. And the other thing I'd simply add to that, it actually provides some security as well for our residents, 'cause all those carports have lights underneath them, they're lit, and so, from an owner's perspective, I like that, my residents like it, and we, we like to build one carport per unit, and I think that's what we've achieved, if I remember right. So, the building, this, this dash line is the setback line all the way around the site, we're well behind it on the Mitchell Street side, the south side as well, we've got a little room to maneuver there, we're right on it here on the west side, so, that was the reason for that ask on that one particular variance. What else can I talk about? So, the other two variances, one was the height. It's a four-story building, it's an elevated, has an elevator. It has an elevator, of course, and as you, as you come in the front door, there'll be a sort of a lobby, library, fireplace kind of setting, and then, this area has yet to get quite finished or laid out by the architect, but the other side of that is gonna contain sort of a kitchen, an area where they have potlucks, that kind of thing, typically happen two or three times a week, and there'll be an onsite manager's office in that space as well, along with public bathrooms. So, right now, it looks like we can do all two-bedroom units, which is what I prefer. Historically, back in the early days, we used to build all one-bedders, nobody wants a one-better today. Everybody would prefer to have a two-bedroom apartment, one for when your children come to visit, or the grandkids wanna stay overnight, it's nice to have that flexibility, so... The height, it is what it is, to be honest with you, it's a four-story building, it does have a gable roof on it, I think it's a very attractive building. If you're down in the Clare area, look for the Water Tower, which is sort of on the southwest side of town, and right across the street from the Water Tower, it's on 4th Street. Drive by the building, it's, it's, I love the building. Drive by the building. It's... I love the building. I like it so much. I built it a second time, and now I want to do it a third time. It functions very well in the residence club. I don't think particularly, in this particular location, that it's gonna be obtrusive in any way. We're sort of on the south end of downtown. The other two buildings that I've built like this are in the hearts of the downtown. Claire is right on the backside of Main Street. And in St. John's, it's one block off Main Street as well. Similar situations. And there's not a whole lot I can do about the height of the building. It is what it is. I mean, that's, when you build a four-story building, that's the height you're gonna be dealing with. If I could figure out how to reduce it in some fashion, I would. But we all have eight-foot ceilings in our homes, and that's what the second, third, and fourth floor are. The first floor is a nine-foot ceiling. That does contribute to it, but it gives a little more of an expanse feeling when you walk into that first-floor lobby and the common area kitchen where they have the potlucks. So, it's nine, eight, eight, and eight. I don't wish to have the picture of that roof. So, I touched on the height. I lost my thoughts here. What was the other variance?
The site coverage?
The site coverage. So, the building itself, as I remember, is like twenty-one percent. So, we're within what your ordinance calls for in the building footprint. What's throwing us over is that under your ordinance, I need to count the parallels, which throws us over on that lot coverage percentage. I can tell you in both cases, and in particular in St. John's, we virtually have zero green space in St. John's. It's such a tight site. We had to really sort of shoehorn that building in there, and that was thirty units. This particular site, one of the reasons that we think it's deserving of your consideration on a variance is it actually is made up of seven different parcels. We assembled seven parcels here to put together enough square footage to hold a facility like this within the proximity of the downtown. And why do I like to be in the proximity of downtown? Because this process that we're involved in at the State Housing Authority is extremely competitive. And today, it's all about the walkability. It's a point-based application, and I won't even look at a site that's not within walking distance of a downtown today. It's just not worth my time. So, we spent about a month running around up here, looking out all over town, and landed on a couple of different parcels that would work, one of which was this parcel. We just, the other one we pursued just wasn't available. And so, this particular site, we were able to put it together. I've talked to the neighbor to the south. There's a local industrialist here. He's pretty excited about the project. I haven't talked to the Dollar General people. I did sit down, threw in the process, and talked with this gentleman, I think Mr. Ish was here, showed him the site plan. And, you know, we're concerned about how we impact our neighboring properties. But as I suggested to Mr. Ish, you know, in this particular zone, you know, as I understand your ordinance in the B3, it's a commercial use. So, there's lots of uses in my mind that potentially could have a much more negative impact on neighboring properties than what a senior housing facility would be. Because I can tell you at eight o'clock, it's lights out. It is. That's just the way it is. People turn in early, but they're up early. And as far as traffic, sure, we're gonna put some people on Aspen and Mitchell Street. But, you know, the average age in my facilities, I actually just checked this on a facility I have down in Chelsea. I was there last week for a budget meeting. It's a ninety-eight-unit senior... The average age in that building is eighty-three. Eighty-three, average age. And so, from a traffic perspective, I can tell you, they plan their day. They may leave once and come back, but it's not like they're gonna make six or eight trips out of that facility in one day's time. So, yeah, we're gonna have, we hope to have forty-six residents here. But my guess is if you get fifty to sixty trips a day out of there, you'd be like, you know, you're gonna have people come and visit. But the residents themselves, maybe one trip a day. Some of them don't even have cars, especially if we have public transportation available, which we do here. Anyways, that's sort of my pitch this evening. I think it's a great project. I'm not a big company. I've been at it a long time. I don't have a big staff. It's just my son and I and a consultant we hired to help us package the applications. But I can assure you one thing. If I'm through Cadillac, I'm gonna drive through this project. And if it's during nine to five, I'm gonna stop in and I'm gonna visit with who was ever in the lobby, or I'm gonna talk to the manager. That's just how I'm built. Whenever I go through a community where I own a facility, I want to know what it looks like. Curb appeal is very important to me. So, I assure you it's gonna be maintained. The State Housing Authority does an annual inspection of the building and the grounds. They also come in and they do an annual inspection on our files, making sure that we're complying with, quote, "Section 42," the IRS code, which is the section that gives us the low-income housing tax credit. So, it's income-based, and the rents are controlled. So, no one living in here, with the exception, I think we're gonna have, what was it? How many? I think I have nine market units that are eligible for folks without reference to their income, other than the market rate. The rest of the residents can make up to sixty percent of the median income. No more. If they make more than that, then they don't qualify to live here. Without getting real complicated, it's actually layered. We're gonna have some at sixty percent, some at fifty percent, some at forty percent, and some at thirty. So, we'll have a few units in here within a range of two to three hundred dollars a month, plus heat and electricity. But the majority of them are at that fifty and sixty percent median income. So, it's designed as affordable housing for seniors who run fixed income. Again, we like it where they can walk to a grocery or a pharmacy, and we can on this site. That's what's really attractive about this site. It's a real short distance. And we are getting sidewalks, as Mike mentioned, along Aspen, which we always have, which is straight. Now, are there sidewalks up here? I don't think so at the moment, but maybe we can figure out with the city how to get that done. So, anyways, I'll be quiet. Anybody got any questions?
How many units is this gonna be?
Forty-six. Yeah.
All two bedrooms?
All two-bedroom, yeah. That, at the moment... They are, unless we run into some difficulties. Usually where I have space issues is around the elevator. You know, when we get upstairs, because that runs first all the way.
One elevator?
One. And then we have stairs here and here on the front and back side, which is provided by code. It is sprinkled. We have nurse call pole cords in the kitchens and the bathrooms in each unit and the public areas. So, if they get into trouble, there's an alarm panel down there that's hooked to a gadget that the manager or maintenance person would carry after hours, or it goes directly to, you know, the fire department or the local... Actually, I take that back. It's monitored twenty-four-seven by a third-party monitoring agency, who then, there's a protocol as far as ambulance and fire dispatch. That's how all that works.
The place you have in Claire don't look like they have carports?
No, they do, in behind the building. Yeah. Doesn't show on that picture. It's on the other side of that building.
How many units are that one?
That one is twenty-four. And then we have a six-thousand-square-foot senior center on the first floor. That building footprint's about eight-thousand-something, as I remember. This one's twelve-something. We stretched this building. We actually, in the Claire building, we just have a single row of units here. This building, we stretched it and were able to add two more units on each floor, which is how we got up to here.
What are those carports gonna look like? Do they have garage doors and stuff, or is it strictly a carport?
No, you know, I should've brought a picture of those. I'll get John a picture of those. They're an open carport. It's what they call a modified gable. See this, but it's gonna be... It's got a short deal there and a short deal here. And then they're lit underneath. In Claire, we did, and we can pick different colors. I usually like to pick the color that goes with, you know, the building itself, given Claire's Irish move and green roof, whatnot.
So, really, there you go, Kirtland Terrace, you can see your carports.
Yeah.
They're very nice carports. There's a company out of, if you want to take a peek, Carport Structures, Oxford, Michigan. You can pull them up online. And I believe this is called the Modified Gable. You can actually see that online if you'd like, but I'll get a picture of them up to you.
Get it to us, and I'll email it.
Okay.
All of them, so they can see it. I do have a question myself, though, too. Laundry, what's the...
Washers and dryers in each unit. Yep. We used to build, the early projects, we had laundry rooms. And that brings its own issues, and the idea was socialization, you know, get them out of their apartments. But today, we just don't build anything without washer and dryer in the unit. And then we try to create an activity schedule down in either that living room area with cards or in the community kitchen where they have the potlucks or bingo or what have you. I like the concept. I like where the project's heading. The concern I have is very fundamental to this whole thing. In order to grant a variance, we need to have some practical difficulty, something to do with the site. And as I look at it, it's relatively level. It's rectangular. We don't have any odd shapes. Well, you do if you consider the fact that I assembled seven different parcels. I couldn't find a single parcel in and of itself that would... I understand that. Of all these structures. You have a parcel that's something a little over an acre, and as I said, it's relatively rectangular. You've got a little jog on the south side.
There are some environmental issues on...
The practical difficulty here that requires that you need a height variance or that you need, that your footprint needs to be as large as it is.
I think the fact that it's a through lot is a unique aspect to the lot, which doesn't exist in very many places throughout the city. The other thing is the environmental conditions he stated on the north end of the site, which is limiting in terms of his positioning of the building and the structures. So, that's two of the items right there, I believe.
I'm having a hard time seeing that this parcel is different than any other parcel in a B3 district.
Well, its status as a through lot makes it extremely unique. And that addresses the setback issues.
I don't see the practical difficulty at this point. That's the thing that I'm grappling with. And to me, that's fundamental to granting a variance. It's fundamental to saying that the rules of Cadillac will not apply to Mr. Seibert.
Well, and there's ways that he could meet the ordinance when having a much less attractive building, but I think that's kind of a self-defeating prospect. And I think the other thing, when all these standards, anything you act on a variance, you have to understand that the entire code is written for an average situation. It isn't the end-all to the perfect height or the perfect setback, or... And you have to have a certain amount of context that you look at when you look at a variance. And, you know, I think...
And I agree. That's exactly the purpose of the ZBA, is that we have some general ordinances, and when we try to apply them to every situation, it doesn't fit sometimes.
Well, and you also, you also have the ability, you also have the ability to look at the surrounding context, and that's written right into your zoning ordinance. You can look at the other buildings that are in similar situations that were built taller, occupied more of the space, and it's about doing justice by what all the other people in similar situations were permitted to do. And that is totally within the realm of the ZBA.
So, any of the, are any of the buildings that Mr. Coy cited in a B3 district, were they special land use? Were they...
Most of them, to my knowledge, they ultimately went through what would be called an RPUD type of thing, which...
Yes, and that's certainly an option here.
Which is, which is the planning commission.
Probably a better option than asking for a variance where...
Do you know the zoning districts of all these projects?
Harborview residential. Kirtland Terrace is office service district, but that's got the forty-foot height limit also. That's Kirtland. Marina Shores is a, you know, residential zoned, I'm quite sure.
I think that's planned unit, isn't it?
I think, yeah. They went through that. They went through that. This is a, this is a B1 type of district. It's a very basic business district. So, you've, you know, you've definitely got different, this is a residential district. And the, you know, part of the catch with this is, you know, again, the, and this is where the applicant decided to choose this route, is the RPUD process is a very lengthy process compared to this. And within the zoning ordinance, apartment buildings are an allowed use, a permitted use as a special land use. And with the planning commission, who he's gonna meet with here in a couple of weeks or less than a couple of weeks, that is a much quicker process. I'm not gonna call it an easier process, but it's quicker. Because with the RPUD planning commission, they have to plan, for example, my understanding of the process, and John knows it better because he deals with it, but they have to at a meeting, plan, like, their next meeting a month later, a public type of hearing. At that point, if they make a recommendation to city council, it's city council's next meeting, they in turn do a similar thing of the next meeting a month later. So, it stretches out. And with this October 1 application deadline, that is the purpose for pursuing this route versus that. And that is my understanding. If I'm wrong, John or Phil can correct me.
Well, our zoning ordinance meant for this type of project to fit within this zoning district. I mean, it's clear to me that it was intended to. I mean, small things can change the height, right? If you wanted to just have a little bit more facility for the infrastructure to run between floors, you know, that adds to the height. Those are, in my mind, seemingly small matters. This is so close of a fit and such an easy process, it doesn't even seem... Usually when you do an RPUD, it's because there's a lot of complexity. This is a very simplistic project, which made it ideal to be dealt with through the special use permit process. It's almost overkill to run a project like this through the RPUD process. Timing's one of it, but there's just another, other host of issues that arise when you go through that process as well. And so, given that it seemed to be designed this way, and that we've, it's kind of meeting all... of meeting all the city plans and the city, what the city's trying to accomplish, we're trying desperately to drive up density in our downtown. And it just seemed like this was the most practical way to proceed. Because it got us where we needed to go, but we, you know, fell ever so short. I would probably say that most people wouldn't even recognize the difference between the forty and the fifty-five feet height, given that a lot of that difference is just gonna be made up in the gables.
Well, the gables allows them to put mechanicals up there and hide, hide it from sight, too.
The, the, the carport setbacks, in the end, may not even be used. That's predicated in the final analysis whether any additional uniqueness to the environment, which means soil conditions on that north end of the site, whether it impacts how far that, that site can be built on to the north. And so, it, it does come down to a matter of just really small amounts of variation to make this project work through a system that was better designed from a zoning perspective to handle this type of a project. If it had mixed use, if it had a lot of different parking demands and a lot of other complexity, I would be the first one to say, let's run it through a PUD, because it warrants all that extra examination. But this is so, it's just a very simple project, just seemed a better way to go, especially given the, the time constraints. And quite frankly, that's important to the city, too, because at the present time, I mean, we've sat here for the last ten years, and we haven't added any housing units hardly at all, whether it be single-family, multiple-family. And for the first time in at least ten years, we're finally starting to see that the city's growing in desirability and, and market demand, that we're seeing some growth. And with this project, it will help drive other projects. And that's, that's, that's another key factor, how we're trying to move forward. The city is desperately struggling. A lot of the projects that we're looking at downtown, whether it's public projects or private projects, are really on the margins. And, and this kind of a project will help us get over the hump on a number of other projects. And we're looking at Cadillac Lofts coming up. This project will, will play into the value of that project as well. And we might even be looking at a possible rehabilitation of the Northwood Building. But it all is predicated on continuation of progress and moving forward. And so, I would strongly recommend moving forward on this, just because in my background, I don't see anything of a harmful nature that comes out of this project.
Where's the other...
And how do we deal with the next applicant who comes in, when we have a, a level rectangular lot? How do we say, we, we like this guy, but we don't like this one?
Well, I don't think it's, as I, as I mentioned, you, you have everything that's in the zoning ordinance available to you. You've limited it to the uniqueness of the site, and that is a big part of your, your job. But the other part of your job is that you can look at what is happening in similar situations, and what the prevailing development patterns are, and you can do justice to developers in light of what the common practice has been in the city.
I don't see those words in the ordinance. I see practical difficulty in the ordinance. And I understand exactly what you're saying about how well this project fits the town, and how we want the growth, and all of those things. But I'm not convinced that a variance is the vehicle to get there.
Well, that, that's your judgment. I, I think you have the grounds, given the ordinance language. I, I don't, if I were sitting on your board, I would have no problem with it. But you, you gotta make up your own decision when you read the text in the language and, and decide what you think it means.
Can I say something? Since we can't vote on it tonight, this is not the time to be discussing it. It'd be really the time to discuss it is the next meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to, I guess, chambermate at this point, and I haven't talked to John about this, but there's a high probability that I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
My son may be here. But if you've got specific questions that you want me to answer, now's the time.
Yeah, we'll ask you, you know, but I mean, this wrestle over, is it, or isn't it, you know, that's gonna be handled when we can vote on it, not when, now.
Where is gonna be the extra parking? For like visitors and stuff?
There are extra spaces along the front of this building here for guests as you pull into the site.
How many spaces is it gonna have? Enough, or...
Oh, we got it on here. Carports, forty-six, handicapped spaces, two regular spaces, eight total spaces, fifty-six. So we have ten additional spaces.
How many seniors have two cars?
Virtually none.
That's not a...
Very rare.
I mean, they're, with our ordinance, they're only supposed to have one parking spot per apartment, so...
Yeah, my parents always had two cars.
Yeah, well, I mean, I...
I've built projects candidly with, with point five to point seven-five spaces per unit. Because we will have some folks move in here who don't have a car, and they'll use public transportation. And then the other thing that happens to be candid with you, if they move in and they have a car, they'll set up in the apartment or on the balcony and look at that car, and after two or three years, when they're not using it and paying the insurance, they end up selling it. So typically, four to five years in, I start seeing vacancies in my carports. Because we're just losing, folks are selling their cars. And I'm just speaking from history. That may not happen here, I don't know, but I'm just telling you that that's my experience across the spectrum of my other projects.
Mike, isn't those condos across from the Chamber Commerce, they allot for one parking spot per unit, too?
They actually...
We had a meeting about that.
We did.
They, they had two. Those are not senior, per se.
But I'm just talking about like the parking per unit.
Yeah, it's, it's two per unit.
The two?
Two per unit, until they split that one off.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
One apartment, yeah. When they split that one apartment, they screw that up.
I think your ordinance allows one per unit for senior, right?
For senior housing. For senior housing allows for one per, one per unit plus employees, and as you said, you have a manager on site, so...
The Cadillac Lofts is a market rate seventy-two unit project, which is being approved with one space per unit. Now, the developer in that case chose to be a little above that, but it's not much over one space per unit for an open market rate apartment project.
Okay.
And those I don't believe are rent assisted, are they?
No.
No, they're not.
From a practical perspective, I can delete the carports, and we can meet your square foot requirement. But as a developer, I tell you, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do it. I'm not gonna build a project for seniors and then come in after the fact to try and get approval of a carport. I've just, I've been at it long enough. They require a carport, most of them, when they first move in. That's just from a practical marketing perspective, I've gotta be able to offer a carport.
I know, I'd want one.
Yeah.
Right, that's what happened to Kirtland Terrace. They came in, what, about ten years ago?
Oh, man.
Or, or, or less, for variance for their carport.
Yeah.
That's why it's fifteen feet off it, you know? They came in for the variance, and they could've gone at the twenty, but the city, the fire department says, no, we can't get our truck down here, we need, so we had, you know...
They had to remove, they had to remove the one.
I don't know, I can't remember what they had to do, but they...
It was a short one.
Yeah.
On the other side of the road, and they had to, they had to get rid of that.
Cause you know...
They'd tear those down.
Out of the three variances that we're talking about, hot coverage and parking. As a practical matter, and I'm just being honest, but I can do away with those. We can delete that request. I've chosen not to. I've chosen to ask for it, because I think they're practical. And I'm telling you, as a developer, I'm meeting the setback right now. I may not need it. I'm just trying to build that in. If you choose not to give that to me now, and I need it, then I'll have to come back. But I'm showing a site plan, and this, this is the plan that's going to the planning commission. And it's gonna show that we're on the rear setback line. We're not in violation of it.
Yeah.
So the real issue is the height variance, in my opinion. It seems to create some concern on your behalf, and I, I get that. And I'm simply suggesting to you that we are on the south edge of the downtown, where there are buildings at this height. It's not like I'm intruding into a residential area. And from a practical perspective, I chose to come this direction because I've got two weeks to get an application finished. We've put a lot of time, effort, and money into this project, and we'd love to be able to file that application on October one. And that's the reason I chose this path. Not that we couldn't do a PUD. I've done PUDs before. But I felt that, again, given the fact that we've got seven different properties that we assembled, I've got a, a through lot that, that is unique in and of itself, because the other two sites, we actually looked at two other sites, one we sort of honed in on, was not a through lot. This seemed to facilitate some of the concerns of the fire folks, being able to get access at least on, on three sides of this building, quite readily. We just felt that the site merited us pursuing it. And this is the path I chose, and you're certainly entitled to your opinion, and I, I get it. I get it.
Cadillac is much needed of these projects for senior housing and senior condos. And I'm glad that we're able to approve your project versus another fast food. I really am. There was an article in the Cadillac News, what, three, four, five months ago? We are twelve hundred units short in the Cadillac area. And we personally have just experienced this. We've been looking for a condo.
We have people calling the city already, wanting to get on a waiting list, and we were referring those people to Phil's administrative person to start keeping the track, you know, the track of the waiting list.
We would've been on that waiting list, but we lucked out.
How many?
We've had six to eight calls ourselves.
I've, I've had a couple, and one in particular would not need any type of rent assistant. You know, just, you know, travels a lot and doesn't wanna deal with their yard. I, I do have a question. If things go smoothly, planning commission, et cetera, when would you be looking at breaking ground?
Well, again, as, as I...
Oh, you've gotta get the application.
I've told John and Marcus that it's a very competitive process, very competitive. It's always oversubscribed. They only have so many credits to allocate. They do it two times a year. October one is the first round under what I call, quote, the new QAP, which is the Qualified Allocation Plan, the rules of the game. They amend it every two years, and it makes my life hell, to be honest with you. Because you gotta sort of sit down and study it again, and, and sort of learn all the new tweaks to it. But the applications do October one. We'll know in thirty days, they publish what they call a self-score. They list all the applicants, and what everybody self-scored their project. And we'll know at that point whether we're competitive. Are we in the bottom third? Are we in the top five? You know, where are we? If we're in the bottom third, they provide us an opportunity to withdraw the application, and then resubmit the next time around, if we like. I've been at it quite a while, and I, I tell you, and again, it's my instinct, and I've said to you folks, there are no promises here, but this site's gonna compete pretty well. It's, it's, it gets all the points for its proximity to downtown, its walkability, I got a grocery store, I got doctors' offices, I got pharmacies, I got a hospital within very close distance to this site. It's exactly the sort of criteria that's in the Qualified Allocation Plan. And it's the main reason I landed on this site. We look for sites that are gonna score high on walkability. Those are the sites we pursue. So I don't, I used to build in cornfields, years and years ago, on the edges of town. We used to do that. We don't do that anymore. It's not what anybody does. They wanna be near the core of downtown. So we'll know then, like, you know, sometime late November, or late October, what the self-scores are. If we stay in, it'll be January, January, February, before we know if we get an allocation of credits. If we get an allocation of credits, then we gotta go to work on finishing architectural drawings. We're just beginning then, at that point. We have complete architectural, civil engineering to do. I've gotta take the credits, and I've gotta sell the credits, or, or sign a letter of intent with a syndicator who's gonna buy the credits. And again, the idea is, we sell the credits, that equity from the sale of those credits buys the mortgage down. So that we typically, in a project like this, you're gonna have, if it were conventional, you'd have seventy to eighty percent debt, okay? That's a normal commercial project. On a project like this, the equity buys it down to thirty to forty percent debt. And the reason for that is, we've gotta have a lower debt service, because our rents are regulated. I can't just raise the rent, okay, to cover my expenses. That's why underwriting one of these deals is extremely difficult. We have to actually underwrite it on an annual basis, where, where revenue grows at two and expenses grows at three. And sometimes expenses, expenses grow more than that. And you can't do that too many years without having that inverted, and then you're upside down. So we're very conservative when we underwrite these. All right? Spring.
Pardon?
Spring.
Spring?
It'll be fall. It'll be fall before I ever get in the ground. Absolutely fall.
I, I would like to add one thing, and I forgot earlier, and I don't wanna forget. The letter from Mr. Ish that I put on your desk, that was received by me this morning. He was the person who contacted me late yesterday afternoon, and actually, he heard about the meeting from Phil. Phil called the, you know, basically let him know that, you know, he was gonna be here for the meeting today, so if the individual wanted to talk to him, he could. So the individual then called me, and that's when I discovered that we did not knew the, do the mailing to the neighbors properly. And so I just received that this morning, just so all of you know.
There was a letter to the editor in yesterday's paper, too, that I think dealt with this.
Okay. I did not read it, but I will. Okay, any other questions?
She has one up there.
Sorry? Kathy, please, yeah, please, if you would, just step up, please. Yeah, thank you, Kathy.
Phil, how long do you think this will take to build?
It's usually a twelve-month construction contract.
Well, it's pretty speedy.
Okay, well, on the public comment part, since we kinda screwed up on the no find everybody, this, we're at recess at this time for review of variance application until Friday, September twenty-eighth, for additional public comment.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I'll make it real short. Good evening, everybody. My name's Randy Lindell, and just real quick, I know, I was the gentleman that wrote that letter to the editor, here's a copy of it. But I oppose a project, the city, we have to, we're gonna be changing the complexity of the neighborhoods here in Cadillac, Aspen Street, et cetera. I think we should wait until we see what the Cadillac Lofts turn out to be, before we allow a project like this real quick. I'm retired, fixed income, but I would not qualify. I don't think any of us would qualify to live there at his project. So that's one of my main themes, and you know, I'd like to get a tax credit, but you know, it changes the complexity, increases traffic. We'd, I, I wouldn't qualify to live there, and maybe... increases traffic. I wouldn't qualify to live there. And maybe I might qualify for the new Cadillac Lofts, which would be awesome for... My wife's just about ready to retire also, so... But again, the variances and the height of the building, I know we're going to have another meeting on this, but I oppose this project. I know many other citizens oppose this project. It only deals with certain qualified income. And I could not apply and live there. And is that right? Could you explain why you wouldn't qualify?
That's not correct. There's twenty percent of units at market rate. I stated that earlier.
So, if I make eighty K a year?
You can still live there.
I can still live there?
If you get it, if you apply in time to get one of the, what, we got forty-six units? Times twenty, it'd be nine market units.
But is this basically for certain individuals? Based on that?
Mixed income.
Mixed income. Mixed income. So, that's why I, you know, we should wait and see. So, we're tweaking ordinances, changing ordinances to satisfy certain individuals for their projects, et cetera, et cetera. And too many ordinances and add-ons have been happening in this. And I know it's a nice project, but thank you. Thank you.
But you do have some apartments that regardless what you make, it goes at whatever your price you're charging, and that person can choose to rent that. Say, "I'm well off. I've, you know, I've just retired, and I just don't want to deal with a home and a yard. I could rent one of your apartments, but I would have to pay your price because I don't qualify for a lower income," correct?
Yeah. And let me just explain that sort of briefly to you. The Clare project is one-hundred percent tax credit. And it was because at the time we built that, the Qualified Allocation Plan, quote, "The rules of the game," didn't give any points for having market units in the project. Under today's rules, they actually, the authority wants to see the mixed income. They want to see the high-income folks living with the low-income folks, and they want that social integration. It helps.
Is that written in stone? Can you change that later, or...
No. That's another good point, I should tell you. Actually, if we are fortunate enough to get an allocation of low-income homes and tax credits, I'm locked in for thirty years. This project cannot... I won't be here. I turn sixty-five this month. Maybe I'll be here. I shouldn't say that. Maybe I'll get lucky, but...
He's always restless.
We're locked into the program minimum thirty years. There's an actual regulatory agreement that's recorded at the registered deeds office that sets forth the restrictions on the project. It runs with the land. I can't sell it and the next guy come in and change it, not until we hit that thirty-year mark. And we may even pledge it in an additional fifteen years, which would take us out to forty-five years, because we can get additional points on our application if we elongate that period.
How do you know you're going to get that variation of individuals with that kind of income, with the lower income and...
Oh, it'll happen.
Maybe you'll get...
We actually...
Twenty people here that qualify for the higher.
Number one, Mike, I think, mentioned a market study. And there's actually a more recent one that was done by Kelly Murdock. I don't know if it's the same, but he did one...
Yeah, there was a recent one.
Yeah. And that was the reason that I came up here.
AES commissioned one about a year ago. And it documented the same thing. The number-one demand of housing in our community is for senior apartments.
So, the market's already been sort of looked at and documented. But I wrote a check for sixty-five hundred dollars to MISTHA sixty days ago. I had to order a market study for the project. They then pick a market analyst. Most of them are from out of state. Why they use out-of-state market, it's just beyond me. It drives me crazy. Our state government is using consultants from out of state. But anyways, that's a side note. It does drive me crazy. But so, we paid for a market study. And that market study, when it comes back, has to verify and justify this project and the income levels that we underwrite the project at. I wish I'd have brought one of those performers with me, but I get that we've got... Typically, we're at like ten or twenty percent of the units at thirty percent of median income, which is the very low. Those are the units that are renting at two to three hundred dollars a month, whatever the number is.
Well, they did have a study of different income levels.
Yes, absolutely. You sort of segment those markets and figure out, you know, the analyst figures out how many folks are at those income levels. And of those, of that number, how many can we expect to attract to this project? And they make a determination that, based upon the way we underwrote or segmented the project, that it justifies or is warranted. And that's the Housing Authority. You know, we used to hire the market analysts, and then they thought developers were, I don't know. So, they don't let us hire the market analysts anymore. They got to hire somebody themselves. And that's the way it works. So... But again, we're into it for, you know, a long time. Long time.
I think it's a good project.
Nick, if I might add, with respect to the question you had Carl, and this is not... this involves seniors and some others, too. But of that one thousand number that I gave you over a five-year period, they showed a need specifically of that of two hundred and sixty for people, seniors, social security, and others with, you know, tight financial situations who maybe aren't over sixty-five or whatever. So, there's... And I can email this to you guys. It's only about thirteen pages, but...
That's okay.
But as far as the motion that you'd mentioned, Nick, I would definitely like someone actually make the motion and support it, if that would be possible, to recess any decision until the twenty-eighth, if that would be possible. And that's...
I'll make the motion to recess until September twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Von Trager?
Yes.
Genzek?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Pivilio?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
Just the motion to recess, making a decision until the twenty-eighth.
You're recessing the public hearing to the twenty-eighth.
Exactly. And I would certainly appreciate... I know that Sherri's going to be traveling on vacation. I'll be getting with you, make sure we have a quorum. I know I contacted three of you, and a couple of you weren't able to get back to me. And, you know, it's important. And I apologize for the mistake that staff made to create this situation.
You're entitled once a year.
I make more than one a year.
You're only meeting two or three times a year.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
Can I absentee vote?
Can I absentee vote?
Any board...
From the cruise? You're going to be on the cruise then, right?
I'll be on the cruise.
Any comments from the board?
You'll think of us, won't you?
Nope.
I guess during the meeting.
Very good. Thank you.